If staff will take us through your presentation. Try to leave us as much time as you can, but obviously make sure that you cover what you feel like you need to cover.
Sheriff Mayor, this is a short presentation. I think we can get through it fairly quickly. Good afternoon. Joe Pantalean, City Manager's Office. With me is Jerry Rustov, Assistant Director from our Planning and Zoning Department. We have Brent Lloyd in the Law Department here, as well as some of the staff from our consultant team. As you're aware, the Planning Commission is dutifully working through their review of Draft Three of Code Next. In fact, they're meeting right next door. And according to the Planning Commission Chair, they anticipate to be completed with their work this week. Next week, there are two council public hearings. One on Tuesday, one the following Saturday. And ahead of those hearings, at your April 26 meeting, council actually passed a resolution setting procedures for those public hearings. And so, as you have the public hearings and you move beyond the public hearings, getting into your deliberations and voting on Code Next, staff set item 22 on this week's agenda as a placeholder for councils, should you decide to establish a similar set of procedures for your deliberations and voting. Jerry's going to go over the upcoming schedule in a bit more detail and go over some of those voting options. What we'd like to get out of this discussion is really, does council want to have a set of guidelines to establish parameters for these meetings? And if there is an interest, what would those guidelines look like? So with that, Jerry, can you walk us through?
Sure. Hi, I'm Jerry Rustov with the Planning and Zoning Department. The first thing we're going to be discussing is the dates, upcoming dates relating to Code Next, council dates. Secondly, we'll be talking about the options for our deliberation sessions. Next, we'll be discussing options on our voting process. And then we'll highlight, just briefly, some of the things that we would anticipate doing post-adoption if Code Next were to pass. So with regard to dates, we have two dates that have already been set by the City Council, by actual council. We've bailed up postcards to every resident and renter in the city of Austin. Those public hearing dates for City Council are Tuesday, May 29th, a week from today, 10:00 a.m. here in the council chambers. And then one on Saturday, June 2nd, also in the council chambers at 10:00 a.m. As Joe alluded to, the process for that has already been set by a council action. The dates that we have been discussing with various council offices, availability of council members, and the two dates that we have right now for deliberations on Code Next, where we don't anticipate there being any actual voting, but just to have discussions, try to get questions answered, et cetera, would be on June 5th, a Tuesday, and June 12th. The important thing to note about June 12th is that you do have a regularly scheduled council work session for your June 14th meeting that day. So I think it would be up to the council whether they wanted to work on Code Next that whole day, or whether they want to work on Code Next for only the remainder of whatever is left after the work session concludes. The anticipated dates for first reading would be Wednesday, June 13th, and Thursday, June 21st. These are the dates which I have discussed with every council office, and these are the days in which everybody is available. I'm still working with Councilwoman Trockler to check on her availability. So we would need to know whether those dates, in fact, work with the City Council or not.
I have a question.
Do you want to keep going in the presentation?
It's up to you.
Maybe we should keep going because Mayor Portimino has to leave, and so that'll give her time to...
Okay. So with regard to deliberation, some of the options, we were looking at two days of deliberations and discussions and question answering. And the schedule I just laid out for you, that would actually be a day and a half right now, or a day and whatever's left over from the work session. We were considering, or actually, I'm not saying considering, these are just some options that were thrown out for the City Council. One would be to limit the deliberation time per topic, that we have a variety of topics that everyone cares deeply about, and that if we talked about one of them for too long, we would probably not be able to get to the rest of them. So an idea would be to actually time-limit ourselves, that we'll talk about this topic for this long and this topic for that long. One question is, when we want to start the discussions, do we want to start in the order that's laid out in Code Next, or would we prefer to, would you prefer to discuss it on a topic basis, a big broader topic basis, in which case we jump around within the code? Or would we actually go in order that is already laid out? The staff could also work with the City Council on actually preparing a list of suggested topics that we would discuss. Staff has considered that a little bit, and what we were considering was that we would move through a process whereby we would talk about a topic, how that topic aligns with city goals and policies, such as Imagine Austin and other adopted policies, that we would discuss where there seems to be general consensus on some areas within that topic, and then also some areas where there is not. And then we would discuss what the Planning Commission did with regard to that particular topic, and then have the discussion move forward from there with the City Council. Another thing that's been discussed with regard to the deliberation sessions is if council members have amendments that they know that they're going to be making when we get to the voting stage, that they could let those be known, so that everybody would have as much heads up as possible that a particular amendment, or at least an amendment regarding a certain topic, was going to be, was going to come up when the voting actually occurred. When we actually get to the voting, and we only contemplated first reading as being the only possibility here, of course, is that we would have to start with a main motion. And the question would be, what would that main motion be? Would it be the Planning Commission recommendation? Would it be the staff recommendation? If it were the staff recommendation, we would ask that you include the addendum and errata that we've been working on since Draft Three came out. Or you could start with the Planning Commission recommendation. And then after that, we anticipate there being a variety of amendments. With regard to the amendments, we think it would be best, and we're working with the City Clerk's Office, to come up with a form, if you will, that you guys would fill out prior to an amendment being considered. That amendment, that sheet could lay out things such as who's the maker, what is the topic, what is the section number of code that would actually be amended, and a, possibly a link to the council message board, because I think that there would be a desire to have amendments posted on the message board, so that everybody can read the language. Before we get to that, though, however, one question that's still out there is whether amendments would be required to be laid out in advance, whether it would be just stated that it was very desirable for them to be laid out in advance, but not actually required. If they were required to be laid out in advance, how far in advance would they need to be laid out? Is it a day? Is it two days? Is it longer than that? That's something I think the council needs to consider. And again, we think that it would be best for everybody, if possible, for all amendments to be uploaded to the message board. At one point, we were considering creating a separate Code Next Amendment Message Board, but we've been told that's not possible. We have to stick with the existing message board that the council has. Submitting amendments ahead of time, I think, would have several benefits. It would benefit the public, of course, by allowing them time to look at it and read the exact language. It would benefit the other City Council members for the same reason. It would also be important to the staff, because we would have a chance, we anticipate being asked during this process, what does the staff think of this amendment? And by having it ahead of time would allow us to look at it, analyze it, and give you our recommendation. We also anticipate that different council members will probably have amendments relating to the same topic, possibly even the same amendment on the same topic, coming from two different council members who just didn't know that the other one was going to be doing the same thing. So another idea is that if we do get amendments submitted enough ahead of time and posted on the bulletin board, that the staff can actually look at these amendments and bundle them, if you will, so that when we're considering amendments, maybe we can consider all of the ADU amendments at one time, or all of the parking amendments at one time, so that we can be more efficient. One big question is whether we start with the text of Code Next or start with the map. Staff feels very strongly that it's important to start with the text, because the map is based upon the text, of course, and so you don't want to do the map and then change the text, because then you have to do the map all over again. And then similar to the issue of the deliberations, when we're doing amendments, are we going to do amendments by topic, or are we going to do them by chapter, in order, you know, that they already exist in Code Next? That is a question that we would need to get resolved by the council. Another thing that we have discussed has been the issue of allowing each council member the opportunity to make amendments, so that there's a fairness issue, I guess, involved. So one idea would be to actually allow each council member to make an amendment, that, you know, you then have the discussion, the vote, and then you move on down the dais, so that everybody has an equal chance to offer amendments. We've also considered that we will have already had two public hearings on this at the City Council level. There will have been, as of a few hours, a couple hour ago, there have now been three public hearings at the Planning Commission and with the zoning and planning commission. So one thing that we, as a staff, would actually discourage would be a lot of council members calling up members of the public to make statements or discuss an amendment. We understand that you guys want to hear from your constituents, who may be out in the audience, but we also feel that if we have a council member calling up two or three people to speak in favor of amendment, that there may be another council member that will call up three people who want to give their opinions against an amendment, and that would actually become very, very difficult to move through this entire thing if we had a lot of post-public hearing input from the dais. Also, we were considering that the complexity of the amendments, I think, is going to come into play here as well. Code Next can be a very technical, very complex topic in and of itself, and I think if we got into a situation where we're talking about amendments to the amendments to the amendment, and then a substitute amendment to that amendment to the amendment, that we may lose track of actually what we're voting on. So one idea might be to actually keep the amendments as simple as possible, and you might have more votes than you might otherwise do if you do it the other way, but you could also keep better track of exactly what we're voting on for clarity of both council and the public. Getting towards the end here. We also, as staff, would ask that the council be, that we actually make a clear distinction this time between a direction for the city's staff to go out and do further research, or to come up with alternatives, versus an actual, you know, vote on an amendment. So sometimes, in zoning cases, you know, we get a simple direction, can you go get some accident data for an intersection near a zoning case? And we say, yes, sure, we can do that. What we really can't afford this time is, after we get through first reading, staff is going to have a lot of work preparing the document to come back for second reading, actually coming up with language, et cetera. So what we really can't afford to have is to have a council member from the dais going, staff, could you come up with three alternative zoning maps beyond the one you've already presented? And then another council member comes up and says, I need three maps that do the exact opposite thing of what that council member just said. And we kind of have individual council members giving us direction to do stuff that could take months or years. So in this case, we're asking you, please refrain from doing that. And then also, another idea that's come up in my discussions with some council offices has been the concept that there's going to be issues that come up as we're discussing Code Next that are valid community issues, but they maybe are not directly impacted. The Code Next does not directly address those issues. So you may have a topic that the council says, this is what we've been hearing as we've been discussing Code Next, this is something the community cares about, this is something I care about. And you may hear from us saying, we care too, but that's simply not a land development code issue. And so to make sure that those things don't get kind of lost, that we actually, as we're going through this, record those issues and prepare a separate document that these are things the council discussed, and they still want to work on, but they are not a part of a code like Code Next. The other thing is, as Joe mentioned, the Planning Commission is meeting across the hall as we speak. I just want to let you all know how they are doing it. They've been going into great detail on the zoning chapter of the code. They have created a process whereby they have pre-submitted their amendments. The chair has created a spreadsheet of basically every division of the code. The commissioners have presented their amendments ahead of time. They've all been compiled into a single spreadsheet. What happens, you have a commissioners making a motion for an amendment. If that motion gets a second, three commissioners are allowed to speak in favor for three minutes apiece. Three are allowed to speak against for three minutes apiece. And then there's a vote on the amendment. So they've created a system whereby they're self-timing themselves, and they're also limiting how many of them can speak. This is just an FYI. It is rather efficient. They have been blowing through hundreds upon hundreds of amendments, and they're doing it right now, if you want to go see it. But I just wanted to throw this out there as an idea. This is how the Planning Commission is handling it. And then, finally, with regard to the voting sessions, one idea we've also discussed has been the idea of a consent map amendment process. The idea here would be that the map amendments, I know, are going to be many, and sometimes they're going to be rather detailed and minute in the bigger picture of things. So one idea we've kind of been kicking around is the idea that each council member could look at the properties within their district. They could propose a list of properties that they, based upon discussions with their constituents, would like to see the zoning be something different than what's in the staff recommendation in Draft Three. That they then take those recommendations from each council member, from all 10 council members representing the 10 different districts. These amendments are then uploaded to a webpage, and the other council members and the public, as well as the staff, can look at those proposed amendments. And then a council member could say, well, that particular property, albeit not in my district, is a property that I would like to discuss more. But the other few dozen properties that are proposed, that the council member wants to change in that district, I'm fine with. Let's say maybe all the other council members are fine with. So we could actually create a process whereby council members can propose changes within their district. Everybody would have a chance to look at them, but then if there were no disagreement about them, we could vote on those all at one time, kind of like you vote on the zoning consent agenda. So we would not have to go parcel by parcel, district by district, voting on a bunch of changes that maybe in the big picture, other people, other council members possibly do not care about. So that's one idea on how to try to be a little bit more efficient when it comes to the map, because the text is going to be one thing, but when you get down to the map and you get down to the parcel-by-parcel level, I think that's going to be more difficult to discuss them each individually. With regard to post-adoption, presuming for a moment that Code Next were to pass, the staff, I want to make it real clear, has been discussing already an adoption period that would be a minimum of six months after the code were adopted. We do have a lot of work to do after it's adopted. We have to retool what's known as Amanda, our database, which is based upon today's code. We'd have to totally reconfigure it. We would want to embark upon testing of the code, using some outside-the-city resources to try to come to us and try to look for possible conflicts within the code that maybe we didn't realize as we were going through the process of creating it, and opportunity to fix those issues before it actually takes effect, so that they hopefully would not affect people in the real world. We also would ask the council to approve an idea that Mr. Lloyd had here, was to actually open, I know this doesn't sound right, but actually immediately after passage, open the code amendment process to Code Next. And the idea there would be, we know that there's probably going to be some typos, some inadvertent things in the code that need fixing, that we didn't notice as we went through this process. And so instead of having to come back to the council and say, can we get your permission to initiate a code amendment to fix some of these mistakes or errors, we just acknowledge right off the bat that we're going to start working on that right away, so that we can start compiling a list of those things, and then come back to the council and ask to have them fixed, without having to come asking your permission to have them fixed. So we would just acknowledge the fact that immediately we're going to start whatever tweaking we need to do. Hopefully, there won't be much, but we'll see. We also need to train the staff and the public, of course. This is a big, major change to something that's been around for 30 years. It's going to take some time for everyone to be brought up to speed on it. We need to do outreach to the public, let them know it's not just a thing we're talking about anymore. This is the new law of the land, and here's how it affects you, and here's new processes, et cetera. And we have the city's criteria manuals, such as the transportation criteria manual, the environmental criteria manual, the drainage criteria manual, et cetera, that all have to be retooled in order to reflect Code Next. So these are the things that we'd be working on in a post-Code Next world. So with that, I have a little quick question. So if I could just reiterate what Joe said, the most, one of the most important things today is to, if the council wants to vote on an item on Thursday, like I said, we have a placeholder on there, but there is no backup. There is no document associated with it. I have provided this document to you all on the dais. It's simply the text from the slides that I just went through, but just so you can have a refresher as we discuss it right now. But again, if the council does want to take action on Thursday and set specific rules as opposed to broader guidelines, if you will, then the staff would need some time tomorrow, frankly, to put that together for a Thursday vote. So we need to know today whether you need us to prepare something for Thursday. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to go first.
Before you go, it's another subject, and I have to leave. I'm sorry. Item 35, the community has asked for a 6:30 time certain. But I will let them know that it appears there are six votes, and possibly, my understanding, the mayor is willing to sign on as a cosponsor, so possibly seven. With them understanding that, I will ask if they are okay not having a time certain, because it seems like it will pass, but I just wanted to please mention that a 6:30. I tried to convince them 10:00. Sorry, they weren't able to get here, but hopefully now, it seems like there's support for it. They won't need that, but I have to go, so thank you. 6:30, yes. Thanks, Mayor.
Let's see if we can take care of it in the afternoon, if it looks like it's going to pass. And please, if you continue your work with the manager on some of the, there were some issues that were raised, possible work-through, still some concern about the budget, conversations about interim versus permanent, so please stay engaged with the manager on that. Thank you. All right, on Code Next. Obviously, you know, I'm not sure in my almost four years on here, we've had an issue that is dividing the community as visibly or emphatically as this one seems to be. And I say that with also the belief that there is really strong consensus among us, and probably within the community as I go around to the community, as to what it is that we're trying to accomplish with a rewrite of the development code, as well as a consensus that we need to rewrite that development code. Obviously, very different opinions among some people as to the path we follow, or how we do that. So I'm sure we have all been kind of racking our brains to figure out how, when it comes to us, we can be the most constructive in the process. And in a perfect world, we come up with something that actually brings the community together, because this is a remarkable place, and I still believe that that's within our capacity as a community to do that. I have been impressed on the times that we have begun deliberations on issues here at the dais, the degree to which I have sensed consensus on issues, when we started talking about how we would apply affordability, how we would do different things. I was, again, encouraged with that when Allison and Ann and I sat down to come up with policy kind of statements that we published, that also seemed to have support beyond the dais for those kinds of statements. And I keep thinking about where we have been our best selves as a council on things that we anticipate would be really widely divisive, and I think of the process we went through with Steve and the strategic planning exercise, where we were able to work through a process and sit down and discuss issues, and actually come up with something that worked. So I know each of us have been talking, and part of the problem with, one of the inherent challenges of being on the council is that we all can't talk to each other before we get to the dais. So a lot of what happens here is we're just, like, thinking out loud, and we can't talk to each other before we get here. I know there have probably been conversations going on. So I want to share a conversation that was going on with me and Ann and Greg, as one possible way to look at June, and then give them a chance to quickly comment on, and then hear what other ideas people have, thinking that on Thursday, we actually sit down and really talk through the options. But one idea we would like the dais to consider is thinking about June as an opportunity not to be spending our time and our efforts trying to win close votes, figure out how we can win those close votes, but rather using June to find where we have the opportunities for consensus. And if we spend June that way, I think that that would enable us to be farthest along and learn the most about where this process would go. To be specific, I think it's really important that as a council, we actually get into the thorniest, hairiest issues, and we discuss them together as a council, so that we can either give, either approve language, or more probably, provide direction. And that we are in constant search for an eight-three, or an eight-vote group that can agree on something in a particular area. That we identify the 10, 15, whatever it is, issues that are perhaps unsettled, the hardest ones, and we go through each one of those issues, and we see whether or not, looking at the work that the Planning Commission did, looking at the work that other organizations have done, where we come from and the people we've talked to, and we see if we can get eight votes on a specific answer to a specific question that's part of those issues. And if we can't, then we start trying to see if there's a range within which we can all fall on that issue, and keep working at that until we see where it is we pick up eight people. And then we bookmark that. And then we go on to a different issue. And we spend the month of June collectively as a group, trying to work with each other, not to win, again, close votes, not to put people through that, not parsing language on line-by-line attempts to the code, but let's pick up the issues, and let's see where we can, where we can drive to consensus. I think it's really important the work the Planning Commission is doing, and I think we need them to finish that work, because they're pointing out to us, in some instances, where there is consensus, and they're able to reach some pretty interesting consensus points. But they're also pointing out to us where there's not consensus, as well as some of the arguments on both sides of those, or as many sides as there are where there's not consensus. So it's really important that they finish this work, even with the conversation we're having on the dais as a council, because that is incredibly valuable stuff. We don't decide right now whether we're going to vote on first reading at the end of June or not, because we don't know the answer to that question. Let's spend June trying to work with each other, and we can make that call toward the end of June as we see how that process goes. I see the dates that you have set up. I would have us suggest, we would suggest that on Thursday, we, one, we post ideas on the board. On Thursday, we try to come up with what that issue list might be. People might post things. And that we start in discussing those issues. You help us understand what you've recommended, where Planning Commission is, help us understand what the issues are, the consultants help us understand the issues. And then let us try to work through those issues and see where the eight-vote place is on those things. But it's a process where we're focused not so much on winning votes as trying to find, to discuss and learn, and try to find a place where we have consensus. Ann, Greg, you want to?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that you did a good job of laying out my thinking on that, and so I would say that I agree with the way that you laid all that out. And then I would just also emphasize, I think that this moves the ball forward. I know that there are many in the community, and all of us, really, who want to take definitive steps to move the ball forward. So to my mind, this is very different than the kind of conversations we've had at the work session. And it's designed to be specific, to find where we have consensus. And as you said, Mayor, to be focused on voting to get that consensus defined here as at least eight votes, and as opposed to spending our time butting our heads against each other to the detriment of the community with really close votes. It's not time to go there. I think we owe it to ourselves, and actually, not ourselves, we owe it to the community to really explore where we have consensus. And I think that there's, as you said, there's more consensus than we may realize. So I like this approach. We may post, Jerry, you had mentioned that we will need a document to potentially vote on on Thursday if people are ready. So we may post a document that reflects what the mayor laid out, just for purposes of discussion that people can react to, and we understand that others may do that, too. So that's the points that I wanted to emphasize.
And I, in knowing our group, we're clearly going to have to have a lot of days of deliberation on Code Next, and I think that there will eventually certainly be moments where there are six, five, and seven, four decisions. And I recognize that I myself will be on either end, on the winning and losing end of some of those closer votes. But for June, since we have two days worth of votes, I have to believe, and I do think, that we have at least two days in us worth of decisions that are eight-three, or nine-two, or unanimous decisions, because it's a pretty big code, as has been publicized, and so there's lots of decisions to be made. And I think that seeing the Planning Commission's work, there are, there have been some really important decisions they've made where they have actually found a lot of consensus. And so I'd like to, I think that... And so I'd like to, I think that the idea of us starting there makes sense, and starting there on hard issues to sort out sort of where the range of the group's opinions are, as much as we can in a context that is really substantive and policy-oriented, and related around the code, and related around trying to understand where everybody's coming from. And so I don't see this as us kicking the can down the road on our work, but actually just ordering our work, where we're just trying to order our work to try to get some of the consensus stuff done first. Mayor, I do think that that might mean that sometimes we can't get deep into policy language because we just may not have the consensus on some of that stuff yet, but there very well may be, and I'm sure there is, some decent chunk of policy in Code Next that we could actually have eight, nine, 10, 11 of us comfortable with and feeling good about. And so I wouldn't want to preclude our ability to do that, because I do think that there actually is stuff that, once we get into it, we'll recognize that there is some consensus on. So I'm open to doing it like this. I'm also open to just going through the code and taking votes, but this ordering, I think, might inspire us to work sort of like we were at on some of those strategic sessions at the beginning of what is going to naturally be a challenging process for us to go through.
And one, just a quick illustration, and then we want to hear from others. So that might mean that on one of these biggest policy issues that we have, that we're not here yet in terms of the ability to speak to all the parameters of it, but we may be able to take a vote on, you know, an eight, nine, you know, 10 vote that gets us closer to what those parameters are, and that may take the form of direction to staff. We'll have to see.
Or a range of options.
Or a range of options.
To the degree that we could ever actually agree on language with that, that'd be great. To the degree that we're saying to the community, the eventual solution's going to be somewhere between these parameters, then at least the community knows that it's not going to be here, and it's not going to be here. So what is intended is really hard work in June, but trying to chase eight-three votes rather than six-five votes. Councilmember Alder.
So I appreciate the desire to set us up for success, and in that vein, I wanted to take us down a level for a minute to the nitty-gritty of the dates, because I'm concerned about us having a deliberation on the 12th, a first reading on the 13th, and a council meeting on the 14th. And I'm wondering if there's a possibility to move the first reading vote from the 13th to the next week sometime, maybe the 19th. Because we don't even, we don't yet have the Planning Commission's output, and if we're going to be using that to guide where there is perhaps consensus, I know that I'm going to need some time to figure out how to digest it, may need to have to go back to their deliberations to understand what they were trying to say, and I'm concerned about us having time to do that on a week that we will have a council meeting and doing that. And I just, I don't know if there's a particular reason that we can't do that all the third week if someone's traveling or whatnot, but if we could think about if there's a way to work around commitments that might be that third or fourth week.
So what we had talked about was not even deciding at this point whether there would be a first reading vote in June, that we would start the process and then see if we could get to that place. So the concept of not having a third reading until, if we had one, until the very end of June makes sense to me. And if we're looking at dates, I also note that we're all here on the 26th, because that's our work session day, and then we're all here on the 27th, because that's Austin Energy Day. So I would like for us to at least keep open the possibility that we might want to meet or discuss or vote on this on the 26th and/or 27th, because I think those are also opportunities. So I agree with what you say, but I even go farther than that to say, let's see if we're in a position to be able to do that.
I guess it doesn't matter to me if we call that June 13th one under the first reading votes a first reading or not, but it mean, in terms of our third meeting, if it's going to be, you know, an all-day kind of thing, having that in the middle of a week, we're not going to have a work session for that, or we're going to have a truncated work session. It just, we do have to still vote on the 14th, and I just, if we want to set us up for success and being able to focus, and I think it'd be easier for all of our schedules if we plotted out the times, and that's not to say we can't do a couple hours on the 13th if we need it, but expecting that we're going to call that a full-day's meeting, I just think it's unrealistic, and I'd rather we laid out some time, additional day the week of the 21st, where we have that opportunity.
Maybe one way to do that is to look on June 5th. One, for everybody to keep June 13th open on their calendars to the degree that they can. And then as we get closer, maybe on the 5th, and we see what happens when we actually got into that, as we get closer, we could see if we wanted to just not meet at all on the 13th, or whether we wanted to meet two hours on the 13th. I just think we'll have more information and data once we see how the process works.
Can I just add that I think that our staff checked, I think June 21st is the only day that week that people, because people are in and out of town that week. So I think that's why.
That's correct. I polled every office for availability, and the 21st was the only day I could get that.
And is that that people are out of town, or that they have?
Out of town.
Okay.
I don't know the answer to that. I would be available on the 19th and the 20th.
I'm not. But the 26th and 27th, I could be available. But I, and I don't know if you, I don't know if staff looked at the next week.
I did not look at the next week.
And then the other thing, without having the Planning Commission's output, it'd be really helpful to get a sense of what you have in mind as the areas where we might have consensus of that level. I think perhaps the watershed would be one that comes to mind to me, but I would like to get a better sense of what you have in mind, and I don't, I haven't memorized the Planning Commission's output, so maybe there are a lot of those votes, but I've been hearing more about the seven-six votes. So I'd like to have a sense of the areas where you're anticipating that the consensus is there from your reading.
I don't know the answer to that question, because I want to prejudge that question, because as a council, we haven't had a chance to really talk. But I think that the first thing we need to do is to try to just to identify the universe of the tough issues, parking, and sub-questions under those to the degree that there are, and then sit down and start talking. I don't know the answer to that question. And I recognize there was some agreement the Planning Commission made with respect to requiring all alcohol uses to be required, to actually go through and, you know, an appeal process that passed, I think, 12-1 or something on the Planning Commission. So I know that, that one, and there've been others of those that we should take a look at, but I don't want to infer that necessarily we would be in consensus on that. But I think we try to identify the hardest issues, and then let's get together and see where we can fashion eight votes.
Yeah, and I would just add, my thinking would be that the starting point is not, Mayor, not necessarily the...
I've been waiting.
Well, I was trying to respond to her question. Shall I do that, or?
Well, let's give Leslie a chance because we're running out of time.
My light's been on, I think, since you started talking, so. Couple things, and I appreciate the efforts to find consensus, and I think that's a positive thing, and we had talked about that previously, trying to find the easy stuff, right? So that's the easy thing, I think. The harder stuff is going to be the areas where there was clear division on both the land use commissions, and I, and let me just take a little sidetrack on this piece and remind everybody that the Zoning and Plating Commission is one of the city's land use commissions. It was separated off from the Planning Commission by Betty Baker back in like 2000 or 2002. And so to the extent that we only refer to the Planning Commission, I want to make sure that, and we did a big deal with a resolution to include them in the recommendations. Now, they have taken a different path in expressing their support or opposition to various approaches on Code Next, but it is no less valuable than the Planning Commission. And they have put out their opinions on things, and I want to find a way to bring those in. And so far, I don't hear us talking in terms of Zap, but they need to have a seat at this table as well, because they are a land use commission. So I would ask for that. I'd like to see how we pull in the Zap recommendations. So that's the first thing, and I recognize that may be a little bit discomforting to some folks, but I think it's hard to exclude that body.
And I think when we hit an issue, I think getting that impeded would be a real valuable thing, too.
Well, they are by resolution supposed to have their recommendations as an addendum, just like the Planning Commission to Code Next. So I don't think we have given any different direction to staff, so that should be...
I agree.
Okay, good. I just wanted to bring that back up. The second thing is what I'm concerned about with the approach that you guys are taking, and remember, I actually was one of the people who was actually arguing for having our first reading be later in the month of June. So I'm supportive of that, because I think we need the additional time and oxygen to talk about these issues. I worry that we start using up all that time in June on the easy stuff, and we don't get to the hard stuff, but then we come back in August, and we're going to be doing budget, we've got to set bond election, those packages, there's all the other stuff that we always do in August and the first part of September. And even when we were talking about second and third reading of Code Next, that calendar looked pretty difficult. So the only way that worked is if we were taking some of the more difficult issues in June. Now, that's not what I'm hearing you guys say, and so I need to get that exposition out there and have a conversation about that, because I don't see how we do that, have the easier stuff and take the next five weeks for that, and then try to shoehorn the really hard stuff in, because I think there was real interest by some of my colleagues to have the vote on Code Next be complete in the early part of September, clearly not going into October. And I gather that that has kind of changed, so I want to talk about that, because in my mind, we, and I've always kind of argued for having, take the time we need, let's not rush a really important conversation. But I didn't get support for that from various quarters at the time I was voicing it, and now I find that that is actually what people are now arguing for, and so I want to understand why this, why the horizon has changed.
I've heard most of the people say is that they didn't want to take a vote until things were ready, so I've generally heard a consensus in the group going back that we would make sure that we constructed a timeframe.
I would agree with you that everybody wants to take the vote when it's ready, and it's the process of getting to ready that was in question, and the issue being, how much time do we allow ourselves to have some pretty difficult conversations?
So to that point, I think the concept was to tee up, to identify what are the 15, I say 15, 10, 20 hardest issues, topics, and make sure that we work through those in June.
Okay, that wasn't what you were saying earlier.
It is what you said.
You were saying, take, okay, well, okay.
And try to find, no, no, to take the issues, but then try to find the place that is, we can get eight votes for. Now, on some of the issues, we're not going to be able to agree on the answer or the language, but because we're divided. So then part of the question is, how divided are we on that issue? So if we can't get to a specific issue in language, decision in language, let's see if we can come to a decision that would provide direction, that would say collectively, there are eight of us that think that the answer's going to be somewhere in this range. Now, we disagree with each other about where we are on that continuum, but let's figure out where we get to eight votes, and we can say it's going to be somewhere in here. That way, the community knows it's not going to be outside of that range, because there are eight people that are in there. They don't agree yet, but we will have talked through the issue, and we will have figured out where that continuum of eight might be.
Okay, so that helps. It was in the context, I think you had introduced that as being the easy stuff, that we would get the eight votes, but you were also saying that that approach would also be on the more difficult policy issues.
If I said that, then I was mistaken.
Okay.
I think the goal is to find where there are eight votes, either because it's an individual decision, or because we can agree, even though we disagree, we're all within a continuum with these limits.
So I would be supportive of that approach, as long as we are taking up, we have to do that sorting in June.
I agree.
Okay? And also try to get, I completely get and have advocated for dispensing with the easy stuff, let's, local in consent, let's just get that out of the way. I don't know how much is going to be on there, but it will take, there will be hard conversations and difficult deliberations on transition zones, just as, and parking, just as to, you know, right off the top, which we have already identified as deep concerns.
And we're talking about identifying whatever the 10, 15...
Or whatever the number is.
Whatever the number, the hardest ones, and let's go straight into them as a council, and let's start talking about them and seeing where we are, and if there's a place that can pull the community together. That makes sense.
Good. And then just so, to kind of wrap this piece up for me, that work really has to happen in June, because we take, we then move into focusing on budget, and if we are going to have second and third readings before October, or by early October, which was my understanding, what was kind of the, kind of the intent in the informal conversations that we have had, we will have to, we will have to do the heavy lift in June.
I think, I think that, I mean, I like what staff is proposing. I think we try to do this in June. June is an exercise to figure out how we limit issues, how we decide issues if we can, or otherwise, how we listen on the hardest, toughest, thorniest, hairiest questions that have been presented. Beyond that, let's talk to each other at the end of June as to where we are, and what has to happen after that. So I'm not presupposing anything that happens after June, other than Ann had raised several points that I see in the staff's thing, which is, we're not going to immediate, whatever we do, even if we decide on something, there's going to be at last at least a half year before it gets implemented, that we immediately start in an amendment process so that people can be making changes. The one thing that hasn't been mentioned that I think is, would be really helpful that Ann had mentioned earlier, was a very public testing. So there are like testing concepts, but make it a very public testing of tracks so that everybody can be involved in it, which I think would also be helpful. But beyond that, let's just really hit this, really hard issues collectively as a group in June, and then let's see, let's see where we are.
Okay. Thank you for indulging that. I did just now pass out one thing I wanted to focus on from the staff's presentation, which is the amendment portal. It wasn't clear to me, Jerry, in your presentation about an amendment portal. Did you say that, a lawsuit that we couldn't do that?
We actually discussed that with, that issue with the clerk's office, and they told us that the, I don't understand the exact reasoning, but the only thing that we could use was the existing city council message board, and it was not possible to create a second message board only relating to Code Next.
Okay, well, I think there may be, I'd like to kind of work on that topic. I think there may be another approach. I passed out a proposal on the amendment portal. I think this is going to be a key public information and transparency piece. It establishes a public-facing portal that's similar to the budget questions, and also the Code Next questions portals. Council offices could submit directly to the portal, we do that now for Code Next, and then have these key fields. So this is a little bit more specific, not just a general conversation, but I want to make sure that we capture council member sponsors on amendments like we do for any agenda item. We always see who the lead sponsor and who the co-sponsors are, when it was received, the section, and so forth. It's on this sheet of paper, and maybe we can put it up on the overhead so the community can see it. And the benefit, just, it's for clarity, transparency, and structure, so that we all have an official record, that it's easy to determine what the official record is. And also, I think it'll help us be able to kind of stay organized and keep track of everything. So I just would like to see if we maybe give this to the city manager and see if we can't move in the direction of creating a specific dedicated portal for this.
And let's think through, before we discuss this on Thursday... And let's think through, before we discuss this on Thursday, the degree to which, if we're going to proceed the way that it's been described, whether we need to go to this formal an extent. And let's discuss that on Thursday. I know that one of the reasons why people wanted to make sure that we had all amendments ahead of time was because it was perceived we could be taking six, five votes on language. We would be parsing language, and people wanted to be able to have that well in advance to be able to debate and to discuss. And while it would still be very useful for everyone to put things up on the messages board or give comments as to these 15 or whatever the number is areas, if we're trying to find a place with eight, then everybody knows they're not, it's not, we're not necessarily parsing language. We're talking about the concepts where there's going to be agreement that we could eventually ask staff to come back with specific language on, kind of remove some of the pressure to be really up on, is it an and or is it an or, except insofar as we would be just discussing that issue and getting a feel for where there's a group of people. Jimmy?
So I worry that if we're not writing down what our amendments, where our approaches are, and if we're not memorializing who it is and the dates and the detail that's in here, that it's subject to interpretation, and we won't have a clear record to the extent that we're talking on the dais. Obviously, the eight of, if you're getting eight votes, you can't do that anywhere else but in public and on camera. But it does get a little bit thready sometimes when we're having conversations. People lose track of who said what and where we're at. So I think we still have to have things written down.
And I see the value in that, too. So let me think about this, too, and we all can.
Thank you.
Jimmy, and then Allison.
So I'm struggling to understand the value of requiring the eight votes. It feels a little too much like what gets the U.S. Senate into trouble, where you end up with gridlock because if you have seven votes, the thing you get used to get the eighth vote, you lose the vote on the other side. I'm hesitant to lock us into a process where we're doing anything but the six votes that we need to do things. You think even in an all-three reading scenario, it's only seven votes, it's not eight votes. So I'm not necessarily on board with that. I understand, Mayor, what you're saying is that, what I think I understand what you're saying is that it would just be a framework in which to order the conversation?
Well, it's partly that.
The easy things with, or the things where there was more consensus would go first?
No. We hit the really hard issues, and it could be that we can't get eight people, or seven people, or six people, or even five people to agree on a specific answer. But we might be able to get eight people, even though they don't agree with each other and couldn't agree on a single solution. We may be able to get eight people to say, well, I'm here and I'm here, so I know that this is the full extent of the range within which we need to work. So the community knows these things are never going to happen, and they know that things outside that range are never going to happen. It doesn't necessarily mean we've got eight people to agree on a specific point, but maybe we can get then, in the alternative, eight people to agree on a range of solutions. So that we can identify for ourselves.
So, okay. Maybe, then maybe, let me restate so I can see if I'm interpreting this correctly. So the order in which we would take up items would still be by topic or chapters, the way staff is trying to figure out. So the order would still be the order, but we would find ourselves either passing amendments because there was somewhat of a broad consensus. Or passing some version of a direction document that directed staff to come back with options for us to vote on either later in the month or in August.
Or some other process at the end of the month when we're trying to figure out what happens next. But yes, we would either be approving by eight a specific amendment language, or by eight, we would be giving direction that said, we're going to be somewhere in this range, and we haven't been able to decide that, or we need options or further clarification. But we know generally we're going to be within these parameters, and we would be able to give that direction. And the community would know that.
Well, that sounds better than the way I first heard it. I still don't think we should be requiring eight votes for things, but I do think we'll find ourselves in situations where even six might be difficult, even though there's agreement to do a thing. And so I still think it should be fine to say, well, at least we had six votes to set a parameter, and then drill down into where the endpoint is. I don't necessarily know where the council is in terms of the starting point, which staff is laying out. Is it the staff recommendation plus errata? Is it planning commission? I mean, if we wanted to take up the ZAP recommendation to just scrap the whole thing, I suppose we could dispense with that and then move on to the actual work. But my general sense is, I want to, I just want to make sure, and I know Councilmember Kitchen, you just kind of said it this way, that we are still moving the ball forward. That we're not, we will always take up the amount of space we give ourselves and a little bit more. So if we don't set a goal and work really hard to do it, then we will miss it for sure. And so even if we just push really hard to get to a first reading by the end of June, and we get to the end of June, and we go, man, we got 85% of the way there. Great, then we'll just take it up that last 15% at the end. But if we say now, well, we're only going to get to 15%, 50%, then we'll only get to 35%, and we'll just be rolling the ball. So that's just the thing that I want to make sure we're avoiding.
Ms. Houston.
Thank you, Mayor. And you all may have had this conversation, I had to step out for a minute, but we're talking about a process. Can somebody remind me what the 2.5 approach was that was passed by the prior council and reaffirmed by us, this council?
Mayor, I could take a stab at that if you'd like. The previous council, and then separately, this council, or previous version of the 10-1 council, did take a vote on the issue of whether to go with the, it was pretty much a 3-2-1 or 1-2-3 approach. Three would be a take the existing code, basically toss it in the wastebasket and write a brand-new code. Two would be to make major changes but keep elements of the existing code, you know, policy, et cetera. And then number one would be just make refinements to the existing code, kind of, you know, fix some patches, if you will. So those were the three, from, you know, minor changes to wholesale rewrite. And the previous council chose 2.5, which I would say is somewhere between make major changes but don't start over and starting over. So they chose the halfway point between those two. And then we came to the 10-1 council and asked the same question, and we received the same 2.5 approach. Now, what exactly 2.5 means, I think, is kind of in the eye of the beholder to a degree. But that was the direction we got, was somewhere between a wholesale rewrite and make major changes but don't start from scratch.
So what would you call the process that we're going through now?
Well, I think the only correct answer is 2.5.
I would disagree.
Ann?
I just, I wanted to add two things. To go back to, I think a couple of people mentioned this, but I'm not sure if we got clear, and that is the document that we're going to have, that not only we look at, but I'm more concerned about the public at this point. I'll need to understand, and maybe that's something you can tell us on Thursday, what's realistic? Because right now, we have a couple of documents to look at, which makes it really hard for the public to understand what we're doing. We, you know, if I'm understanding correctly, we have draft three, we have addenda, and we have errata. And then we're going to have the commission's recommendations, so that's two commission's recommendations. So that's a lot of documents for people to keep track of. So my request is to help us understand what's possible in terms of putting that stuff together. And by, really, the only thing I mean there is, can we possibly put draft three, the addendum, and the errata together? I think we need to keep the commissions separate. Again, that's, I mean, you don't have to answer that right now unless you can just flat-out tell me no way. But I guess I'm hoping that as much as possible, we can do that just for clarity for the public's purposes.
Councilmember, I understand your concern. I would have to speak to some folks at the office that actually, you know, prepare the document. But specifically with errata, you say the addendum.
Yeah.
You know, I've heard before, almost 400 pages. Well, that's because we've taken the page that was changed, and we've highlighted that change on the addendum page. And so our desire was that if we have an addendum, we didn't want to stitch it into the staff recommendation because you'd have to go there to find it, if you will. Whereas having it kind of stand out on a page and say, on this page, these words are changing, kind of, you know, brings it more to your attention exactly what's changing. You don't have to find it with a full page of text. So we were trying to kind of have the addendum stand out as opposed to bleed into the text.
Well, I certainly understand that as a way for people who are trying to do like the track changes kind of thing. The difficulty is that, I think, and so I'm just asking you to think about it, you know, and you want to know what you think. But the difficulty is, I mean, I've, you know, I've talked to a good number of people that have thrown up their hands and said, I'm not reading this until I know there's something in front of me to read that is the latest iteration. So that's the universe, which I think is more people than the people that are just tracking. But it's not an either-or. If you've already got, you know, if you already have it separated the way you have it, for those people that are tracking, they're probably already tracking. Anyway, it's just, you have to think about what's possible, and I know that we have logistical issues. I'm just relaying the concern that I've heard about the difficulty that people are having.
Councilmember.
For some people are having.
I understand. And, you know, one idea would be that we leave it like it is now to, like I said, bring more attention to what the staffs were being changing. But if the council were to move to include the addendum and the errata in their motion, which we certainly hope they would, especially the errata, those are just obvious mistakes, that even if they move for the planning commission approval, that the addendum and errata could also be incorporated into that motion. But then also maybe before second reading, we could actually put everything together.
So that's the point at which you think it might be logistically possible?
Yes, because we'd be having to do major rewrites anyway based upon the amendments that we get at first reading. So we'd be retooling the document at that time.
Okay. I'm not sure if that gets us to where we need to be, but I understand the reasoning. So then the second thing I would just say real quickly is that, so I, Councilmember Plannin, I understand the question that you're asking on, you know, why eight. But my thinking about that is that, first off, that I want to reiterate, we're taking the hardest questions, so we're not pushing them off. We take the hardest questions and go through this exercise, and I think there's value to the community to identify where we can get closer together. And we may find, we may surprise ourselves. So I just think it's premature to start taking, you know, six, five votes, or seven, four votes, or whatever, whatever you want to call them, close votes, because we haven't, as a group, tried to get closer to consensus. And I'm thinking that as a community, we're going to be better off if we can, if we, at the end of the day, to the extent that it's possible, we're going to be better as a community to have come together and pulled off a code that is, that represents that kind of community consensus. I think that, I'll just say one thing, I think the mayor said it better when you started talking, that's when we're the best that we can be. And I strongly feel that way. And whether we can get there or not, I think we need to try. So that's, and I think June is where we try. And if we can't get there, then, you know, later month, you know, September, October, whenever we're taking up the rest of it, then we'll take hard, you know, it's not an attempt to avoid hard votes. It's an attempt to say, the best that we can be for our community and to bring people together in our community is to try to get that consensus where we can. So.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask the city manager if you could see about getting some other dates on our calendar as blocks of time for council activities, whether they're Code Next or something else. We still potentially have to take a vote on MLS in June. We have to get our bond together so they can prepare the language. We have to consider the charter commissions mandates that they've come back with. I'm hoping that all the work we've done with the strategic planning will lead us to having to spend less time on budget than we spent last year because we've captured things in a new way, but that sort of remains to be seen. But, you know, we need to get these things on our calendar, and if we have to cancel them, that's fine. But if we don't have them on our calendars, we're not going to be able to have those dates after a certain point. I will remind my colleagues and tell those who don't know, I will be leading the city's delegation to India, September 22nd to 29th. I don't have the firm dates on either end of that, so that will have a constraining effect on September with respect to that. And so I want to make sure that that is out there. I agree with Councilmember Kitchen that we need to try to see if we can come to consensus, but I think we do have to be willing to tackle some of the hard issues. Part of the anxiety that we're hearing out in the community is because people don't know where we stand. They don't, can't figure out how we're going to vote on compatibility, how we're going to vote on transition zones, where we're going to be on McMansion. And we need to make progress on those issues to identify how we're going to move forward. A lot of the anxiety is because people don't understand the process, and they don't know where we are with respect to the votes. And so I'm willing to work to try to see if we can have consensus and move in that direction. But we have to be able to take some decisions on these things to move the ball forward, or the community is going to continue to be in this limbo where the fear is there because they have no idea what direction we're going. And, you know, I would love for us to come out with an eight-three vote on things, but we do need to be making decisions on some of those real big issues, and we should be spending our time on the important things first. And to the extent that through the course of this, that's what you've laid out, I think we can move in that direction. Who is going to decide what order and which chapters and where those things are, and how do we, how are we going to get to that point to be setting the agenda for what are right now four days that we have laid out?
So my hope would be that we could post, hopefully tomorrow, kind of a stalking-horse list of issues. Staff could certainly help us with that. On Thursday, we ought to be able to discuss that. People can certainly add issues, and it's not like if it's not on the list on Thursday, it can't be added. But if we can come up with kind of a working list that we can add to of what we think are the toughest, thorniest issues, then when we have the public testimony on the 31st and on the 2nd, we could ask the public to speak to those issues, because that's where we're going to be spending, you know, our June. That's a possibility. But I think that we kind of, we see if we can be looking at a list and discussing it on Thursday, and then adding to it. But to your first point, I agree with you 1,000%. We're only constructive in June to the degree that we are making decision or narrowing issues so that the community can see that. And so that we can see where we really are, too. We don't know, as a group, where the group is. Ms. Houston?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And what I would like from staff is on those seven, six votes that happen sometimes, I'd like to know the difference in those. Because the reasoning behind one group of seven voted one way and one voted, six voted something else. So if there's a way to be able to say what the differences were.
Councilmember, you're referring to the PC actions?
Planning Commission.
Yes, sorry.
It's okay.
That would be difficult, Councilmember, only because at last count, they were voting on 800-plus amendments. So I think to give the reasoning behind it, I think we could maybe work on that for some of the larger, you know, bigger-picture issues, like, you know, they were closely voting on parking, and here's what they were saying. But to actually go through, you know, eight or probably by the time they're done, 900 or 1,000 actual amendments, and tell you exactly why the votes came out the way they did.
Not all the votes, but those that were seven, six, the key ones.
We could work on the key ones, yes.
The key ones. Because otherwise, I'll have to go through thousands of hours of testimony.
Somebody's going to have to, right?
Somebody has to do it. And you were sitting there, I saw you sitting there.
Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to offer just a couple brief observations related to some issues that have been brought up. And the first is just that Code Next is going to be an exhibit to an ordinance, and you all are ultimately going to, what you're going to pass on first reading is going to be the actual ordinance. So I just want to... So I just want to, there's going to have to be a process by which council members vote on amendments to individual chapters. But then at the end of that process, once the individual chapters, as documents, have been amended, there's going to have to be a holistic vote on the ordinance. And we will work with you to try to come up with a process by which that all can happen. I don't think we have to work out the details of it here today, but I just want to, want you all to be aware that that's, ultimately, there's going to have to be a holistic vote on the ordinance as a whole. And then the second point I wanted to make is just that, as you all are working on amendments, we encourage you not to get overly into wordsmithing. We, if you give us direction as to what you want to see, and some of that direction will be very specific, some of the amendments may be a little bit more general. But either way, if you can express what you'd like to see in your amendment, that will let us work on language that achieves your objectives within the context of the code. It's a, you know, it's a complicated code. All codes are complicated on some level. And making sure that it syncs up with all the other pieces of the code is an important and sometimes difficult task. So just as you're writing your amendments, we encourage you to think in those terms.
Sounds good. We've also gone through the drill a lot here over the last year and three and a half years with respect to first reading on ordinances. Sometimes we don't have everything worked out, and we give direction. And then staff works on that and then comes back with resolutions or suggestions when we come back for second reading. Obviously, the more specific that we're able to get, the better. And we'll know, you know, at the end of the month, where we are on that and how close we're getting. Councilor Alter?
To the extent that you're providing the Planning Commission votes, if you can also give us a sense of who voted on each side, so they're...
Yes, Councilmember, we are working on that. We're one meeting behind.
Sure.
You know, because we have to go back and sometimes re-watch the tape and see who raised her hand and things like that. But yes, we are recording every vote by who voted, not just a vote count.
And that will be shared with us, and...
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any further discussion before we go to the, end the meeting?
So Mayor, if I understand correctly, then I'll just make sure I got my assignment right for Thursday. It would be that you're asking us to work on a proposed list of the 10 items to be discussed in the future. Is that correct?
10, or whatever it is.
Okay.
You've been through the process. But make sure that on there are the major issue headings, but make sure that you put on there the tough questions, the ones that people are laboring over, to make sure that we hit all of those.
And then any proposals as far as a possible vote to be taken on Thursday would come from the council member who uploaded that to a message board, correct?
Right. We have the placeholder, so council members could bring different things. And we'll make sure that we at least have this proposal in front of the folks.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Mayor? Yeah, I'll post it, and people can comment on it.
Uh-huh.
When will we have a discussion over the base motion?
Over what the base motion is?
Yeah.
You could throw open that topic now if you wanted to.
Well, I don't actually know what the Planning Commission's voted on, but...
Well, then you want to have that conversation on Thursday about, on Thursday, what would the base motion be? I mean, to, in my head, I see us starting off by having a discussion on these major issues. And depending on how that conversation goes over the month of June, it may or may not make a difference which one we use as our base motion. Because we will have tried to work through what the tough issues are. My primary focus at this point, for me, is to tee up the really hard, difficult questions and put us in search of finding out how specific or wide the range is that eight of us can fit under a tent. Recognizing that that does not mean we're searching for solutions that all eight of us agree on. Ann?
Yeah, and I would also add to that. I don't see us, I don't see our first conversation or action putting forward a base motion. It doesn't have to be under this scenario. I mean, we will need to at some point, but it doesn't, we don't have to start with that. We can start with topic by topic, going through this process.
But I think by the end of June, we have to have a sense of that. I mean, certainly by the fifth, we don't need it, but, you know, at some point, we are going to have to make that decision.
In other words, we don't think we have to put a base motion out before we start our conversation of the tough issues. But we will, of course, by the end of June, have to figure that out, so.
Right. You look confused.
Knowing what I know about the votes that are being taken, and Planning Commission has not finished yet.
Right.
And knowing what you were talking about with Councilmember Kitchen and Kassar about finding large areas of consensus and building toward an 8-3 kind of a vote, a majority of the votes on the Planning Commission, or a substantial number of them, were 7-6. And I would, I would propose that we try to start, however we do it, whether there's a base motion immediately or not, that we start with a more neutral document, which, for me, would be the staff recommendation, because we can add to that or amend that. But we, but I'm deeply concerned over the frank lack of consensus.
Right.
The lines of division are just as stark there as they are elsewhere.
And my sense is, is that we don't have to decide that question now. It'll be clear to us what we want to do once we go through this conversation. And just by way of one last illustration, Planning Commission has taken a vote on whether 30 feet is the right number. And seven people agreed that 30 feet was the right number, and six people said no. So we have a 7-6 vote approving 30 feet. If they stayed and talked, and we were trying to find out where there were eight people, we might find that there are eight of us, while we do not have agreement on 30 feet, it may be that all eight of us are somewhere between 22 and 36. In which case, we can say, "We don't know what the right number is, but we do know that there are eight people between 22 and 36." Which means that it's unlikely it's going to be less than 22, and it's unlikely it's going to be more than 36. And we still have some work to do. But it's that kind of thing. It's not trying to find the agreement point. It's trying to lower the, to see how close we are and where we have to do additional work. And then having decided that, then we'll put that aside, and we'll go to the next really tough question. But for direction for the community, they'll know that it's not going to be 100, and it's not going to be 10.
Right. And a good, and a good starting place for that conversation would be on the more neutral document.
Well, we're going to tee it off without even a reference to a document. It's going to be, the topic will be, in that height or width, or whatever 30 feet depends on, it'll be talking about the issue. Let's talk parking. And let's talk about all the different places where people are engaging on the parking issue. And let's talk through the policy behind those and where we can, where, what people are thinking about that issue, and see how close we might be. Let's talk about transition zones. Let's talk about compatibility. Let's talk about those things with the subheadings underneath them that are the issues under those headings, that we need to eventually, ultimately, take votes on that could be 7-6 votes. But we're not there yet. That's not what June's about. Yes?
We've spent a lot of our Code Next time having the consultants or the staff speak to us. There's a certain amount of basic information we need to be able to have this conversation. That needs to be gotten to us beforehand, and we need to be discussing things in here where we're discussing things. We can consult them if we have specific questions. But if we end up having them come in, and for every one of those topics, they have to do an hour-long presentation to tell us all the differences of what's out there, we will not be able to get into the meat.
I agree. To agree, to agree that we can annotate that list of issues, that will be helpful. And to the degree that we can come up with a, with a very quick, "This is the issue, this is what Planning Commission did, this is what Zap did, this is what staff recommended, these were the points of issues on that," to kind of lead us off. But this is really June, a time for us to be able to talk to one another.
Mayor and council, just real quickly, there are a number of resources on the Draft 3 website, including the policy tables that council at one point asked us to produce, which really illustrated and described a lot of the major policies that were in play. Of course, they will then be informed by the Planning Commission recommendation and votes, which will come out on a separate spreadsheet. So we hope between those two documents and the additional presentations that are on the Draft 3 site, that would give you a starting point.
Yes, Ms. Houston.
My last thing is that, one of the things that I thought was very helpful when the Planning Commission was meeting, especially when we have in the public hearings and the deliberations, is that first the schedule breaks. It just gets really unwieldy and difficult to stay focused when you're going from 10 o'clock in the morning until 10 o'clock at night, even with a lunch break. You need to just have time to, every 45 minutes to get up and walk around or something.
We'll do that. We'll do that. That's a good point. Very helpful. Anything else? All right. That said, it is 3:42, and this meeting is adjourned.